Make sure that we get an invitation to the dedication.
Yes, I'll make sure you get an invitation. We had to feel the football field was renamed and I was not aware that you guys are not getting an invitation. I would like to apologize to the board for not extending an invitation to you guys, but you will get an invitation if you so give this this name. You'll get an invitation to the to the to that, so. Thank you, guys.
All right. All right, let's go to six dot zero two, early new early college proposal, 2016-17. Mr. Alred and Mr. Fishback, come on to the podium and talk to us now.
All right, good evening. Let me get set up here because we've got a lot of information to give you tonight. I want to make sure we've got everything ready. So we're really excited tonight to share this with you and hopefully garner your support for our new early college proposal. This is the culmination tonight of about 11 months of work. It started with a seed for Mr. Fishback and went through lots of hands, lots of feedback, lots of discussions. And we're going to give you an overview of that tonight. And at the end of the day, what we're really looking for is to expand opportunities for our students in Cabarrus County. So it's it's really an exciting thing to be able to do. So by the end of the night and definitely moving into next week's full board meeting is to give you the information you need to make a decision moving forward. So we're going to talk about really our rationale, a summary of the overall proposal, our timeline to date and the timeline moving forward, what our budget projections look like, and then give you plenty of time to ask questions. Definitely as we move through that, we might be looking around a lot. This has been a team effort to bring all this information together. So we may have to bring some people up, but we hope we answer all your questions moving forward. So Mr. Fishback is going to talk about just the rationale and our overall plan, and then I'll move forward with the budget and the timeline.
It really started with every year, we're turning away a lot of students. We have, it says, you know, average about 190 applications a year. We can only take 63 students. So really what some, the best day of my my school year should be sending out those letters saying you've been accepted is really probably the worst day of my school year because I have to send out, you know, 120, 130 letters saying sorry, we can't accept you. And I know I've disappointed a lot of other kids that really wanted a different opportunity for a different way of school. So the number one rationale is to really admit more students to the early college program. It's also to replicate a program that is existing and has been successful. The current early college has an A school performance rating grade, ranked 23 out of 599 public high schools in 2014 on ACT. Graduation rate 95% or higher. Eighty-four percent of our students last year earned an associate's degree. Eighty-four percent went on to four-year school. And those seniors, that that class last year earned over $4.8 million worth of scholarships. So we've got a very successful program. We've got kids that that want to get in, that don't have space. It's also to increase the magnet opportunities here in Cabarrus County, to increase that school choice that parents are asking for. It's to create 200 and 250 additional seats because this would be a new school on another campus. And then finally, to capitalize on the specialized programs located at the CBTC campus of RCCC, those being the computer science, kind of computer technology integration and the, excuse me, electronics engineering program. So the plan would be to create an actually a brand-new high school with a STEM focus on technology and engineering, and it would be located on the CBTC campus. That's on 29, right there across from the Kmart, if you're not familiar with that, the old Ed Center. It would start August 2016. We would start with a ninth-grade class of 63 students and add each year, just as we've done with the current early college. This shows the current site. We would be placing four modular units there on the sites to serve as the facility for the high school, one of them being a very large eight-classroom modular unit, a, an office complex modular unit, dining facility, and then storage as well. That would house all of our needs. The kids would take their high school classes there and then move inside the building and take all their college courses. And the students at the school would be following one of two paths. They could get their associates in science, which are geared towards those students that are planning to go on to a four-year university or college. They would take classes that would be geared towards the computer science or the engineering. On top of that, those students could take additional courses to get stackable industry certificates. They can get like the CCNT from Cisco, the Security Plus from CompTIA, the Internet Business Associate, Network Technology Associate, and A+. So there's lots of things that they can go, even though they're going on to a four-year school, they come out with some industry certificates that they can work along the way and say, look, I am I am employable. The other track is the associate of, the Applied Associate of Science. Those are for students who decide, you know what, I think I want to get my associate degree and I want to go straight into the workforce. And those students will be taking those Applied Associate classes in the fields of the computer technology integration or in the electronics engineering.
So as you know, new things don't come without a cost, right? So let's look at the budget a little bit. We actually just modified this slide today before the board meeting because this construction, the second line item there of the $710,000, I won't say it's a floating point, but it's a moving target. We were looking at used facilities and trying to save that dollar as best we can. So new facilities are very expensive, but used facilities come around. When Vance first had this idea and came and we went through and looked at it with senior leadership, we had a kind of bead on some facilities that were out there down at the coast somewhere that Tim and the guys found. Those units are gone, so they went back to the table. We found some more units and I just had a cost projection today that I have in detail that I'll be glad to hand you so you can look over. But just looking at the the items that we have there, we have our startup costs and we've listed that both with and without funding. Part of what happens when you apply for a cooperative innovative high school is you go through the application process. They say yes or no on your application, and then the funding comes down later. So Vance gets and has gotten every year since he's been approved at the Cabarrus, the current early college, $317,000. And he can talk in more detail later during Q and A about what that covers. But as we've discussed in senior leadership, one of the things that we want to really look forward to as you make this decision is making a decision this week about doing that application and moving forward regardless of whether we get that funding. We think the the cost per student and the cost benefit for growth of those 250 seats and the choices for our student is well worth that cost, so we've put both projections there. No one's never got not gotten funding if they've been approved to date, but we do know from talking with the state that there are a lot of applications this year, more than there have ever been before. So we all know what the budget outlooks looks like. So to that end, we will have to do technology regardless. Technology is startup costs, getting teacher computers, student computers, everything from running the cable line from Time Warner and all of those costs, that's going to be about $150,000. The construction cost of $710,000 is on a specific unit that's available now. Okay, it'll be available in March, but I've got a little note on here after talking with Tim. Like, one of the things we need to look at is some flexibility of releasing funding if we decide to move forward because the unit that's available today may not be available tomorrow, so we have to look at that. Child nutrition is going to cost about $5,000. They don't do a full cafeteria. If you've ever been to the early college, they have kind of a multipurpose room. They've got a warmer, they've got tables, they can take and exchange money, but it's not a full kitchen. They do that as a pipe-in service, so that's the startup there. Furniture costs is around $80,000. And then, of course, our CIHS state funding, which is cooperative innovative high schools. On the one side, we don't pay that because we get the funding, and on the other side, that would come from the district each year annually to maintain that, the school. And then ongoing costs annually, the $50,000 for technology is to provide one-to-one computers for those students. We currently do that at the early college that we have, and we'd want to continue that at the new college to make that as equitable as possible to provide that fidelity. And then even after that four years, that lease or purchase re-ups as our district moves to a more saturated technology environment and four years down the road, you know, that that number may change somewhat, but that's what that number is right now. And of course, our annual costs of with and without the cooperative innovative high schools funding. A couple notes that I wanted to do, we asked Tim Lauter, you know, what does it cost right now to build a high school? Right now, to build a high school of around 1,500 students would cost between 55 and 60 million dollars projected, which is around $35,000 per student. And we add up all of these costs, you know, we come in at, you know, one, two, and then you look at the the time of the years, we come in at around $3,700 to $5,000 per student, which is a significant cost savings in order to expand those 250 seats. And that, to me, is kind of the the beauty of this. We got an email this morning, or last night, from Carol Spalding, who's the president of RCCC. One of the things that Chris and Jason have done and we've worked with is garnering that support from her. And she sent Vance a personal email that said, congratulations on being an A school and making the community proud, and their board is behind it, behind this and is ready to move forward. So we've made significant progress with the relationship with RCCC and what we're able to do there, so we're very pleased about that. It's interesting. Does that show up on your screen by any chance?
I'll let work with the color.
Okay, yeah, all the work with the color and it kind of disappeared. Let me give you a little bit of the story. Like I said, Vance came with this seed, but it really started in earnest last December. We had a vision casting meeting where we met with senior leadership. Vance kind of laid this out for us and and the same thing he told you earlier about this purpose. We had to submit a letter of intent, which meant that we had to garner support from the community college and from our senior leadership just to begin this process in March. Vance and I went to Raleigh, got some feedback from new schools, and they have continued to provide support in in terms of feedback on our application, phone support, email support, as we've honed that to make it better. We we've done that draft application. Vance did the first one in May. We've gotten feedback this summer as well. In June, Jason and Chris actually met with Dr. Spalding over at the community college to really kind of put our senior leadership heads together and make sure that everybody was on board with growing the early college about what the benefit would be for our community, for our school system and the community college. We met as a team. Vance did all the legwork on this. He he searched through the courses and the curriculum, looked what was on that campus and has done amazing work. But we actually sat down with their curriculum leadership. They brought about five people to the table from the different departments, set out curriculum paths that they're committed to. One of the benefits of this is that they get to grow a campus and and grow programs because of the funding and the students that this brings into them, which benefits them in the long term. But knowing that these students may come to them, 250 students over the course of the next four years, they're able to build paths and curriculum for us. And my take on that so far is that they've been very excited to do that. And then just recently, in August, right before, after school started, we did a site visit. Technology came, Michael and Kelly, Tim Lauter and Chuck met us over there, Jason met us, and we looked at the facility. I was able to take a tour of the actual interior of the building and see the classrooms that would be available to our students for the the community college aspect. And so far, have been really pleased and have had a real open and relationship with them around that. So moving forward, the timeline gets a little tight. We have application due date of September 15th, which is next Tuesday. We're going to answer questions about that, but I'm pretty sure that moving forward the application is very important because it means that whether we say yes or no, we can't do anything without the application in place. So one of our our large goals is to make sure that you feel comfortable with the application, which you did receive last week, and I know some of you have looked through. We'll get notification in October pending that application of whether we're approved to move forward with an early college, not the funding part, but approval as an early college from cooperative innovative high schools. That happens in the fall. We would then start recruiting students, and I think this is the the wrench, so to say, is, you know, we can't start an early college without students, and we also can't start an early college without funding. So in order to maintain that equity, we would want to go on our normal magnet timeline, which begins in earnest in January, so Vance could go through the same process of notifying, recruiting, interviewing, and selecting students. That would happen in the spring. We actually don't get a budget decision from the state until July to open a school in August. And Vance lived through this, as did Cabarrus County Schools, and we opened the first one. We got that notification right before the school opened, but had to do all of the preparations to be ready to open that school, even without knowing that that funding was coming down in the form of the $317,000 from cooperative innovative high schools. And then we want to start school in August. A few key points I want to bring back as we move into question and answer. Main thing is that the facilities availability, we want to make sure and clear up any questions about that because that's a timeline issue, both in the terms of flexible funding, whether we need to look at other options, questions you have around that, but I know that we need to move on that in order to make that happen and want to make sure that we have guidance from the board and direction on what we want to go. And I know Kelly's prepared to answer your questions or at least take them tonight regarding that. And we really want to ask for your support regardless of that funding from cooperative innovative high schools, looking at the cost per student, what that does for that 250 seats, and what it means for our district. As we know, we face that 800 to 1,000 kids that come in each year, and our system grows moving forward. And then, of course, our application deadline of the 15th. So at that point, we'll open it up for questions. We can jump into the application, of course, or go anywhere you need to on that.
Mr. Powell.
I I can't think of a better use of money, honestly. And have you considered starting bigger? Is eight as many as you can get in that parking lot?
We actually did some.
Because I've been to a training there.
Well, we did some research on this, and part of what makes a cooperative innovative high school is the size. That's average around the state is about 220, so we're actually a little bit larger than most of the state average. Once you get over that, you end up being basically a small traditional high school. So you're looking at, I mean, that's the reason why they keep it lower. Also, another reason is that 317,000 that comes to me every year, I have to pay textbooks out of. And this past year, I spent $102,000 on textbooks alone, and that's a yearly cost, so it's only going to get worse. The more kids you add, the more money the textbooks. I don't get any more money from the state for more kids. They don't do it on a per-people basis. They give you that cooperative innovative as a block and said, spend it for textbooks and for, there's three positions that we have to pay for out of there, and that pretty much eats it up. So if you go larger, then you're talking about facilities, you're talking about money for textbooks and everything else, and you're also just talking about getting away from the true intent of a small school.
Well, so the other, the only other option, I guess, would be a different campus or a third campus at some point.
At some point, there are some like.
Another geographical location.
Guilford's got a ton of them. They've got like four or five. They've got one on every little, every campus for Guilford Tech has one. So there's there's other options that have come along the way, and I would keep that open to the board because it's definitely, it's a successful program. It is, it's a good operating procedure that comes from new schools. They have a good formula for it, and it works, and I think it's something we need to replicate.
I've had the opportunity to go to a graduation party for a traditional student, and there were a number of other students that were there, and the one of your students that graduated, I guess, this year was almost like a, she was quite an ambassador for your program, and she was trying to recruit others to to come join her. But, you know, based on my conversation with her and then the others there, there's no better money spent, I think. And I like the fact that the idea came from you and it started by somebody who's got experience there in the school, and you wanted to grow the program. That's that's impressive. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Karen?
Well, you know, I'm a big supporter and and I've been able to give scholarships to actually some of your students. One of the questions I have to ask, have you looked at making your current program a year-round program? Because a lot of times, if you do that, you can add additional students to your current site. Have that been, has that been looked at?
Well, year-round, the problem comes in that the colleges don't get the FTE money to support them in college classes during the summer. There's only a few classes, so if my students take summer classes, they have to pay for them. So therefore, that kind of negates that purpose. And and also another reason, we work our children very hard, and they do need that downtime. I tell you, the kids that go year-round, sometimes I can tell they're burning. Just the accelerated pace we go at, I truly believe they need that downtime.
Well, I'm very, the the two programs that, I mean, I'm proud of our system as a, I mean, I brag all the time, but our two programs that that I always just am so proud of, of course, is our early college and our PLC. And and these are two programs that I always am very supportive of, and I would love to see this one expanded. But again, I'd like to see our PLC expanded or it go year-round because these are two of our programs that are just outstanding. And again, the the year-round, that's, that was one of the things I didn't know if we had explored to see if there was any way we could, because, again, space-wise, because, again, I know everybody, they want to see it expand, so whatever we can do to see that happen. And it looks like site-wise, if if that can be done, and you say the first year you would put 63 in then, that very first year?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's the most that we can get in there then?
Right, we'd start with the freshman class and then do that every year.
Okay, that was my only question.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Philip, Dr. Phillips?
Yep, so I really like the way you presented this, it's a very compelling argument about the cost per student for adding capacity at the high school level. I think if I remember it, so you said $35,000 per student if it was a new high school and about $5,000 per student if we do this. That's quite a deal. I I like that. And I assume that part of it is that we're basically taking advantage of space that already exists at the Rowan Cabarrus Business and Technology Center, and we'll be sending our students over there for part of the time, so that that is really terrific. So I'm wanting to understand, how much money are you going to need in this fiscal year, between now and the end of June?
So if you go back to the slide on the budget, for me, we can't count on the state funding. So I think what we're asking for is an upper limit of 1.2 million dollars.
Okay, all right. And since that is this fiscal year, okay, and so I guess between now and the next media I'm looking at, Mrs. Plutz, saying, can you kind of come to us next week with some suggestions on how we might be able to do that? I am given, I I'm really reluctant to go to the county and ask them for this, given how they have been so generous with us so far. They have basically bent over backwards to accommodate the new projects that we're doing. And we, it seems like we come every other month with, oh, I need a little bit more for this, I need a little bit more for that land. And and I don't want to try their patience by, especially if the state rearranges the sales tax, such that our county is a loser.
And I say yes on that, but Kelly may look at it and say, some of that could easily come out of next fiscal year. I don't know what that looks like.
So I guess that would just be, I would just say, so you, between now and next Monday, take a look and give us some options. Okay. And I think that, oh, I did have one other question. So the current early college high school also accepts students from the Canopus City Schools. Will this work that way?
No, they will not.
Okay, so this will be only for Cabarrus County School?
Correct.
Students, okay, great, thanks.
Mr. Walter.
Jeff covered a couple of my questions, but again, Kelly, are we thinking this is growth funds because you're getting these new students anyway? Is that kind of the thought process behind that?
So the operating things, the reoccurring things, very well, it would be because, so we're taking, you know, you're taking 60 students out of the the schools that are already at capacity, and you're moving them over so that money is.
I mean, we have a capacity problem with our high schools, so this is a way to address some of that.
So, yes, and so the funds are there, and and, you know, each year, we're getting more and more students, so the the money comes with them and it just can go over. So now the capital, on the other hand, we have, you know, we'll have to get creative with that. And so, you know, we have some things that we can look at, but just because this thing just came down, the the used, whatever you want to call it.
Modular learning units.
Modular learning unit just came down today, and we were just kind of, so we do need some time to to kind of scrape through maybe the capital projects and the, and look at the books and see if there's a good way to.
Because this is not going through the, this is not going through the budget, typical budget process.
Correct, it was not in the.
Something's got to go, but.
Something's got to give.
That we would have funded otherwise.
Yeah, so we can, you know, just right off the top of my head, I don't want to make any commitments or anything like that, but I do know that from our roof projects, there's a little bit of money left over in that. We're we're finalizing those things out. I know Chuck probably has other things that he'd like for that to go to, but, you know, the board can can, you know, select a priority. But those are the kind of things I want to look at and give you those options next week.
That's all my funding questions, I think. So you're saying everything that the students would need is on that campus? They wouldn't have to go to another RCC campus to get any of the classes that they'll?
Correct.
So that's that's another strong positive as well. Somewhere in the proposal, I think it was, I don't know if you, what is year 13? You had like 13, 30 students, what is that?
Year 13, if you if you look at the the curriculum pathways there, those students that choose to do the AAS, the Applied Associates, will take five years.
So we'll still keep them?
Right. Our current, our current early college is a fifth year. We have a 13th grade.
And they stay five years because when there are students, that can still be free for them. So it's to their benefit and great part of Vance's about the early college program.
That's what's huge about this program is, you know, these students have a two-year college degree for free. I mean, that's a ton, ton of savings for families, especially the folks that have never been to college before.
Right.
I mean, that's why I'm a huge supporter of what you're doing there, and I think this is a great thing if we can come up with a way to to fund it.
Mr. Harrison.
So our graduation rate currently is 90%, and something like this would bump it up to 91% or 92%? I mean, it would, it would have, yeah, you can't guarantee that, I know that, but I'm saying this would have a very beneficial end result of appealing to students who want to take a career path or a college technical path and be a great inducement for our students to come to this program and and attain those goals very quickly and very right at hand and available to them through this. It's a great focused program. I honestly wish I had something like this available to me when I was their age. So this is very visionary and very insightful. You mentioned, I believe, the Community College's board, Dr. Spalding. Do we have a formal agreement that Rowan Cabarrus Community College is on board and agrees with this approach? Or are we just in negotiations or informal discussions?
She's calling a board meeting to to vote, just like you guys are going to be voting here too, so.
And will we need something like a memorandum of understanding or something very explicit?
Well, what we need for the for the application to forward is just a signature from both board chairs to say that this application, both boards approve of the application, and then we move forward. Once we get the cooperative innovative high school designation, then we'll sit down and actually hammer out a MOA like we have with the current, you know, early college, setting up what what are the operating procedures on that campus going to be? So we'll have to do all that once we get that that designation. Right now, we just need to sign off that says, we as a school district and a community college want to move forward with this application and want to be considered for it.
Okay.
You can, as long as we have it, I have to have it in the board, in the office, September 15th, so.
So, so here's what I'm trying to get in my head around, long-term. The early, I'm sorry, the, yeah, your program has how many administrative staff right now?
My current, just me and dean of students that I pay for.
Okay, under this new program?
It's the same, it's going to, it's going to mirror the same.
Okay.
The dean of students is one of the positions that I pay, I pay for three salaries. I pay for my dean of students, which is, it's not even, it's not assistant principal position, even though she's she's certified. It's a lead teacher position, 10-month. And then I pay for a school counselor. And then we we pay, we reimburse the college for a college liaison, which is their employee, but we we reimburse them for it.
So you're saying, in effect, the same number of staff would accommodate 250 students as opposed to 60?
Do what?
You're saying the same number of staff would accommodate many more students?
And we won't hire as many teachers for, yeah, so you only start with four teachers.
Okay, okay. So you feel like the agreement with the community colleges is in place and is going to go forward?
Yeah, she's put forth a couple of stipulations, but because we're going to be providing the space outside of their regular facility, she's pretty much said, as long as we're providing the space outside, we can do what we want in that space that is in that schematic. We'll be, you know, our students will be taking courses inside the building, but lunch will be in our provided building, administrative offices, storage, everything will be outside in those modular units. And Tim and Chuck have given us some great information about how we want to make that look as permanent as possible, even though they're going to be modular units with sidewalks, decking, awnings, foundations that look permanent so that students can have a building that they go to school, that they can call a school. So pretty much as long as they're out in the parking lot, I think they're very happy with us.
This is a great idea. This is a great approach. This is really wonderful for our students. But what are the challenges to this plan? Honestly, hit me between the eyes.
Okay.
What are the challenges with this plan?
Here are the big challenges. Number one is the funding issue. We will not get, the application goes in and is awarded by DPI, senior Quabber Innovative High School. The funding comes from legislature, which doesn't come until July. If we need to start, we need to start recruiting. I can't wait until July to recruit students. So if we need to recruit, we have to recruit starting with the same magnet timeline, which means the board would have to commit to saying we're moving forward. Because if we recruit them, we accept them in March, you can't come back and say, sorry, you know, we're not going to do this. So if we're, if we're going to do it, we need to say we're going to do it.
But when, when, and I mean this constructively, when you say the board would have to commit to this, in effect, we're saying the board would have to commit county resources to go forward with this?
That three hundred, yes. That's what, that's what we're saying. That's, that's the biggest challenge right there is moving that forward. Other than that, I think we're pretty much, you know, the facilities, when we found out the first facilities were already sold, then it kind of threw us, but they were working real hard and found some others that are actually better than what we had the first time around and truly meet our needs a whole lot better. So I think that, you know, that's the biggest hurdle is.
Okay. I do want to hear a whole lot more details as we go forward. Thank you.
I have several questions. Because I don't think Mr. Purr has any questions. Okay. All right. Our signature page, which is submitted on September the fifteenth, along with our application, I guess you'll have to hand deliver it if we don't, if we don't vote until next Monday.
No, we email it. They want it emailed anyway. So we'll scan it that night and, or scan it that next morning and send it. So it does not have to be hand delivered.
No last minute trips to Raleigh.
Yeah. No. They want it electronically, actually. They don't.
Because you were in the Batmobile and running up the highway. Okay. Could this application be denied? Just the application itself, not for the funding, but just for the application itself?
I've worked with Lisa Eads, who's on the committee for, that's going to be looking at these applications. She works with the North Carolina Community Colleges. I've had them review it at least three times now. And she says, you know, this looks very good. It looks very strong. So there, is there anything here that's going to trip it up? She said, it doesn't look like it, no. So.
So they can approve these and not, maybe because you have so many in the pipeline, they may not approve funding for all of them.
They don't approve any of the funding.
The concept of the college and the high school being together.
So, so one of the things that we heard from districts that were at the meetings that we went to, some of them do choose to move forward with funding on their own, right? And they make that decision with the designation, but don't get the funding because those are separate processes. One comes through Cooperative Innovative High Schools at DPI, the other one comes through the legislature.
Okay. Next question is if we, if we, let's just say we pass it tonight, how long before we would know that we were, we would get the official go ahead, that we have been accepted? Because, I mean, it would be fruitless for us to get capital monies and invest those and not know that we were invested, you know, that we were accepted. So we've kind of got this gray area that we're working with while we're waiting for that final word, even though you, even though we think our application is in line.
We were told it'd be October, early November.
So at this point, we have until probably our November board meeting to find the funding, the capital for the modular, the MLUs, the modular learning units.
I would imagine so, yes.
Does that, does that sound correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. George Tim?
I was going to, we lost the other unit because it was so, right after we came back to it. This unit we have found is available now until sold. Okay, that's, that's pretty much the way we've got it. Available until sold, which doesn't give us a whole lot of warning and fuzzy that it's going to be there two months or three months down the road. It is a actual classroom pod that was used by the Air Force. It was built specifically for the Air Force, all steel construction, hurricane related, the whole deal. Kind of one of those things that just kind of a godsend, really. It came in that we were not expecting. So I would, you know, as part of your agreement, it's a, it's a tenplex. It brings in ten mobile units that are all pulled together. There's one big open, it's already in classroom space, already has restrooms, that sort of thing. We have use for it regardless of whether we use it for early college or whatever. I mean, I've got twenty mobile units at a high school. I could put one of these units there if I had to. So if we, if we made the effort to purchase the, the unit, even if, God forbid, we failed, I think we still have use for that unit, which is something we probably want to go ahead and commit to as soon as possible.
Will you have the amount of money associated with that unit available to us by our next meeting?
If you agree, before we work with Kelly, the best we can is trade money as much as we can in facilities to make that happen.
Well, I mean, for the board understands how much money they're obligating the district to. But at the same time, we could make, we could pass and sign the sheet tonight, move ahead with the application. But then our next board meeting, we would have, I guess, the final numbers on the capital and understand that so we can make our final vote next week on the capital side of this. Is that?
That's right. I mean, at any point, up to the start of next school year, you can like say, we're not going to do this. This is just voting on the application moving forward.
Right. But I'm talking to Mr. Lauer here, and I want to make sure that we're online. So you could have us that information by our next meeting.
Yes, they could have you that information, but I'll send you your commitment pretty quickly. You know, I get the information.
Right, right, right. Well, we understand that, but the faster we get the information, the better this board can make a decision.
Is there a harm in waiting a week to get the financial information? You can wait the week?
I don't think so. No, it's not going to be that quick.
I'd like to see the financial.
It may be three, four, or five months before we can take delivery and stuff.
Right.
But I need to make sure I can make commitment. So it does not, I mean, he's obviously, like, farming this unit out to other places that are looking for something similar. We're just very fortunate to have some contacts to be able to get us to that location now.
All right. My, my next question is, was when we would need to allocate the capital? And obviously, you're, you're going to give us that information. So next week, we could have allocated capital monies for the purchase of these units, which you assure us that we could use not only there, but in other locations somewhere in the district. So it wouldn't be wasted money.
Yes. The only unit I really committed capital for is probably the tenplex, which is the two hundred and twelve, fourteen thousand dollars. That's, I can find the other similar units, you know, much more readily than I can that one. That is the one that would be the main classroom, which is kind of hardest to come by. It already is upfitted, which saved us a lot of money. Even the last time we looked at it, we had two units, a hundred and ten thousand dollars a piece, and we had to completely renovate them. These will actually have classrooms already built and ready to go and set up for us to be able to just do some minor polishing.
Much of the costs, and I'll hand this out to you right when we're done, and you can look over this, you can have it tonight. Much of the cost related is due to setup, electrical, utilities, all of that stuff, sidewalks, awnings, smaller units that aren't in, in part of this bid. We just got that information before the board meeting. So that's why you don't have any documents. But the unit itself is listed around two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So that full seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's where I think Kelly would work on when we do those things and what fiscal year they come out of this or next year, depending on what we need to do to get that site set up and ready to begin school in August. And quite honestly, you know, Vance and I have already talked to contingencies about how we would do that. If we can't get that to happen before, so that we can look at money for next fiscal year. So we've already been thinking about how do we serve students in the event that this, this stuff doesn't come through. And we're committed to making that happen.
And finally, you, you said that you'll be doing your solicitation in March. So the board's final decision as far as the go-no-go decision needs to be sometime in January, and I guess, right?
Well, we need to actually, we need to know, like, when we, when we set forward with the application, I'm hoping that that, that's your commitment, that we're going to go ahead and start soliciting students. I'm not going to make, we won't select students until March, but the timeline for magnet schools, we start going out to middle schools late October, early November. Then we have open house on January, right around that first week we come back to school. We have, our applications are now, are live online starting January, probably fourth this year. So that application is for the month of January. So we're going to be starting to move pretty quickly. So.
If, if you just start moving quickly, just make sure that parents understand that you got an application that's in process.
Right.
And the singing hasn't occurred yet. So, you know.
Well, we wouldn't be making that yet.
Just make sure that they understand. I wouldn't want to go ahead without an approved application.
Oh, I would, yeah. We're going to definitely make sure of that.
Okay. Any other questions from you board members? Mr. Powell, you're keyed up. Do you have any comments?
I move, we accept the application.
All right. So I have a motion to accept the application by Mr. Vincent Powell. And Ms. Carolyn Carpenter has seconded his motion.
So we're only approving an application. Is that correct?
Can I?
Because I really want to see financial on how we're going to do this before I'm ready to commit.
Right. I was going to say, can we also include obligating two hundred and twelve thousand to purchase the tenplex? And we'll let Kelly sort it out. And I prefer it not come from facilities and maintenance, because I know they're.
May I ask if we just keep the first motion on the application and separate the, the capital piece? And that will be simple for everybody. All right. So Mr. Powell has made a motion to accept the application as written. Ms. Carpenter has seconded that motion. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
When is the, when is the deadline? When do you have to submit this application, did you say?
The fifteenth.
So it'd be the day after our next meeting. So technically, we could wait until?
Correct.
Monday. Okay. So, because you're, you're basically saying you're going to take our approval of the application as a commitment to fund the project?
Well, we're, no, we're going to move forward with just the application at this point. We're not going to start moving forward with anything until after that decision by the state comes back, and then we can let you guys know.
Yeah. I think, I think we have one more decision point on this, and that is, once we get the application back, I think we have to affirm the application by saying as a board, we are going to move forward with this project, which you said would be sometime, probably our November meeting, more than likely.
Probably, yes.
As you all, as you all think about it to vote tonight, what our commitment is, we put, you vote, we put in an application, and from a public standpoint or anything like that, we stop. We'll continue to work with Kelly and Tim on the facilities and the budget, but we wouldn't do anything community-wise, student-wise, or parent-wise until we even got the application approved, because that would be, you know, as Mr. Shoemaker said, that would be unwise. So we wouldn't do that. So once you approve the application, we submit the application, and essentially, we wait to make sure that gets approved, which gives us the time to make those other decisions, have a thoughtful discussion at next week's board meeting, and look over any information that comes from Tim or Kelly.
Okay.
So it becomes a report item next week and not an action item?
Actually, there's no item for.
I'd certainly like to discuss.
Nothing for this vote. I just want to get this vote out of the way, and then we can move on to the, the money piece. Yes, Mr. Harrison?
And I hope this question's germane or appropriate at this point, but to what extent has the county been apprised of this plan? And what buy-in do we need from the county commissioners going forward? Or is this just, is this just between us and Rowan Cabarrus?
Mr. Harrison, can we vote on this one? And then I'll let you in on.
Very well, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, anybody else have a comment other than that? Let's vote on this motion that's been before us. That is the motion to approve the application as Mr. Powell has so, has so articulated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. The application is going to be submitted. We'll sign that. Mr. Harrison? Mr. Harrison, we do have a chair, vice chair meeting this week, and I'll make sure that we bring this up, that we have submitted an application, and that's all we've submitted at this point. And we'll just let them know, and that we are looking into some other things funding-wise. So that brings us to the next point, and that's the capital and the decision. Do we need to vote on that tonight? Or do we need to wait for the final numbers from Mr. Lauer and vote on it next week?
I don't think we need to vote on it at all. It's under two fifty. So superintendent can encumber that amount. Is that correct?
Is it under two fifty?
Yeah, these are not budget, budgeted items. I think we need, I think we need a discussion.
You can only approve something that's budgeted for two hundred and fifty thousand.
That, right.
Okay.
Dr. Phillips?
I was just going to say, I, I think we should.
I'm going to lay him in trouble.
Give, give, give Kelly and Tim Lauer until next Monday, and then come back and tell us what you, you know, what, what you're thinking. And, and what you're thinking could be, let's wait another month until we see what the state budget is. So that's okay.
And I'd like to see, Kelly, you said two, seeing where your thinking's coming. If we have to come up with the, the whole amount, what we were looking at, one point two, if you've got any ideas, where if we have to come up with the whole amount, where your thinking may come in, if we have to come up with that whole amount, how creative you could come up with, if we would have to come up with that whole amount, where you would come, say if you could kind of bring us a report back on that, if we would have to come, if it be split up this year, next year, whatever. But what kind of ideas you may come up with on that?
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I guess, Carolyn, there are going to be trade-offs. I mean, something's got to, something will probably have to give at some point, but we'll wait and hear that discussion.
Yeah. All right. Board members, any more comments on this particular subject? I will.
I do want to say one thing quickly. I just want to commend these two gentlemen who've worked very hard to, to give us an option where we have two hundred and fifty more students. Dr. Van Huclem met with the curriculum people at Rowan Cabarrus, and Mr. Lauer and Mr. Taylor have done a lot to make this happen. Dr. Spalding and their group has been great and very supportive with this. So they really deserve a lot of credit for it. And really, to probably preach a little bit, this is another one of those examples of how things come about. This is why we need a budget. You know, when, when you don't have a budget, things come about, you, you get an opportunity to buy ten classroom mobile unit for as cheap as you can possibly do. And you need to be able to say, hey, can we buy it? Well, if we have a budget set in stone, we have a much better idea for that. So you're kind of held to this standard that we should be cheap and do things well, and we have opportunities sometimes that we can't take advantage of. And so that's why we need to know where our budget is in September and not be bound by this. But as far as the work that all these guys have done for that, to give students an option for a great model, you know, they've done it as fast as they can, but there are questions that we can't answer yet and that we don't get applied for, or don't get the answers for the application for. So I think it's a no-brainer as far as that we do it, but you have to take a little bit of a leap there and say, this is how we do it. And then sometimes people criticize for that with money. But there is no other way to do it except to make it happen and say, we're committed to this because it's the right thing. And they've done a lot of great work for that. So I just want to make sure we said it. And RC, Rowan Cabarrus and Dr. Spalding really jumped in there to really be supportive and say, we want to add to this too. And the way I look at it, it's a county project that gives seats that, Dr. Phillips said before, we kind of take advantage of some seat space, maybe there along with the community college, along with this modular unit, modular unit, but we're also adding students at their place. So everybody benefits from that, and it's just a plus for the county. So just appreciate all the work that everybody's done to this, to get it to this point.
One question. One thing, have we looked at maybe making the PLC year round by any chance, which is so we can add maybe more students or anything? Or has that even been looked?
I would just say, like everything else, there's a cost for that, and there's transportation for that. And, and without a budget, it can be a little scary. But it's certainly something I think Dr. Williams would be willing to look at. And Mr. Allard's shaking his head. That's something they're going to, going to talk about based on tonight.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, board members, we're moving on. Thank you again, gentlemen. Hand this out? Okay.
Three down this way, and the rest go this way.
All right, I'm handing out the budget numbers that Mr. Allard gave me. Now we'll move on to our next item out, and that is six dot zero four, which is Conservation Eastman in Hickory Ridge. Mr. Lauer, come on up.
Sorry, six, six oh three, please.
Six oh three, excuse me. Whoops. Yeah, I flipped it. The BOE BOC agency agreement for Mount Pleasant Middle School. Thank you, sir. Property on Walker Road.
This is a, an agreement we enter to, similar to a school we build. One, it, it goes with Cabarrus County to act as its agent in order to build and improve properties owned by the county. So basically, the county will own the property once they acquire it, and then we would act as their agent in order to bring about this facility. It's a pretty straightforward agreement. It allows us to, you know, make applications for permits and apply to the state for driveways and rezoning requests and all those sort of things on behalf of the, of the county in order to facilitate the building of this school. It's pretty straightforward. We've done it several times, obviously, but this is just a formality.
All right, board members, are there any comments on this?
We do that to save tax, save taxpayers, because with the refund.
Yes, sir. And it also includes the refunding of the tax monies back to the project.
That's primarily why we're doing that.
It's not, it's not primarily, but it is a nice bonus. It's part of the agreement. Yes, sir.
Consent agenda? All right. That was good. Ms. Monroe will put six dot. Ms. Monroe, we'll put 6.03 on the consent, and now we're going to 6.04, Conservation Easement at Hickory Ridge High School. Mr. Lauter?
This is a re-proposal of an existing request back in 2012, and I think finalized by the board 2013. As you know, the state has a mitigation program where it's a mitigation bank situation. Of course, people impact wetlands, they impact streams, and that sort of thing. They pay into a mitigation bank, and then that bank then is farmed out to what we call mitigation brokers, where they find locations within the state, within the same basin that have at-risk streams or streams that have been altered because of agriculture or whatever it might be, and allow them to take those monies then and restore that stream to replenish that credit, if you will, from that mitigation. In doing so, they've identified a site at Hickory Ridge High School along Back Creek there, and so it was done before. At that point in time, the mitigation banker was not able to acquire a client for using that mitigation credits, so it expired. And so at this time, he's asking us to come back and look at it again, because I think they have a buyer for that mitigation, and they're asking us to redo this agreement. There are two things on the agreement that, I know Ms. Aileen had got a revised language considering dates, and I think that revised language did have some language in it that I had a small problem with. And I'll go back and ask him to amend that on section 5.5. There was an access restriction, saying that we could not restrict our access to the site from Hickory Ridge Road or Raging Ridge Lane. I have no problem with that language, except the fact that we are fixing to let a contract, or NCDOT is fixing to let a contract for the extension of Raging Ridge Lane and a bridge across Back Creek. And at that point in time, DOT may restrict access through there to this particular site. So I want to make sure they have that time period within their mitigation bank, and I'll make sure that language is changed accordingly to bring it back to you. And also, I had to add some language in one of the paragraphs that guaranteed that we would have the right to cross that, convey our stormwater across that easement, and easement would not impede or in any way the construction operations of that associated roadway, and also that it would not also impede any additions for the sewer line by WASC in the future along Back Creek. I didn't want to cut someone off by allowing this easement to go into place. And that language was inserted into the other language, but then I guess that revised, when they revised the dates, they left that out. So we're going to make sure that goes back in. So I would like for you to keep that on the action agenda, with the revised agreement coming back to you with those changes to it for your approval next week.
Tim, that was one reason I thought we didn't do it the last time, because we were worried about those very same things that you said, and that's why we kept it in our hands before, because we were worried about those. And all the stuff that was going on in Harrisburg with DOT and with the railroad and everything, and we felt that, now, Tim, weren't you on the board then when, and I thought that was why we decided it was better just to keep it in our, in our, in our hands anyway, because all the construction and with us, I mean, with us to keep it in our hands and just because we were worried about the exact same things that you're talking about, and for us just to keep it in our own hands, because we knew raging, and, you know, that hadn't been let, and we're still waiting for it, and it's better for us to have it in our hands, and us know we got control of it. Now, I'm just telling you what, why we were worried about it. And for a dollar, and, you know, a dollar for three acres, to me, that's not a real good deal. I'm sorry. I'm just telling you like it is, bud. But that's why I think we didn't do it before. Now, you can recheck the notes and find out if that's the case, but I think that's why we didn't do it before.
Well, actually, you finally did get around to approving it, because they did sign it last time. Y'all approved it eventually. You approved it.
I know, but I was thinking we didn't.
But they approved it in 2012, December 2012, it was actually signed in 2013.
But it was significantly different. What we approved in 2013 was.
Order, 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 order. One voice. And Mr. Walter has the mic.
What we approved in 2013 was significantly different than what we're being presented with today. And I'm just not, not at this point, comfortable with that.
What I remember was that the last time Dennis Testament from the Conservation Department came and spoke in favor of this, so it would be nice to at least get some kind of a communication from him.
Oh, no, no, sorry.
Up or down?
This came from him.
That's, okay.
Through Morganson. Once the easement is passed, Morganson will actually mitigate, use this to restore the stream. Once that restoration is done, it will transfer back under the Conservation District here in Cabarrus County. So they will actually have control over that easement in perpetuity, wherever. Okay? By the way, you are still on the property. All you're doing is selling them access across it to be able to restore the stream on the property. You're still on the property, but the easement is still set aside for the Conservation.
Why not make that clear? Because that's not at all what this agreement says.
I think the language does have it in there that it would be transferred back.
Not in simple terms, like you were asking, just to get access to.
Well, I'm not a attorney, so I don't have a legal attorney. That's exactly what it tells us we're going to do, but we will make sure that that language reads correctly then.
And it would help me to make a decision if we could get a letter of communication from Mr. Testament of some kind, saying that he's in favor of this. Right now, I mean, I know, I should take your word for it, but for the record, I would like to see a document from Soil and Conservation District saying they are in favor of this.
And I think what's also happened is this thing has a sunset clause of October the 28th, 2016, at which point, if they haven't done it, they'll have to come back again to us, and that's why they're here this time, because we don't grant them this easement access for any, for a very long period of time.
The last time, you had access for 90 days, and they were not able to close the deal in 90 days. That's what I can tell through. So this gives them an hour, basically 12.
So now, yeah, we've given them a year to clean this up and get it done.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Action agenda or consent?
I guess I just need some additional information. I'm sorry to drag this up. I own a house on Stallings Road. I've always felt that the parking area of Hickory Ridge and Hickory Ridge Middle has contributed to flooding in that area. Now, stop me if I'm barking up the wrong tree here. How will this easement plan here, we're speaking of, impact runoff in lower lying areas, literally downstream from the high school and the middle school? So again, what I'm saying is, maybe just anecdotally, I've thought that the construction that was done on the property, which is now Hickory Ridge and high and middle schools, had a bearing on the flooding that was experienced on Stallings Road. Am I, follow where I'm going with this? So I just want to know what, what the impact of this discussion is on the possibilities of that in the future. Sorry to be vague, I'm just trying to say, help me connect the dots here. I don't know quite get it.
I got you there. First off, the parking lots at those two high schools have not impacted the flooding whatsoever. So I guarantee you that. You spent lots of money.
It's always flooded, but it's always come downstream.
It's flooded an awful lot. But the problem is, we have stormwater detention that was required by all state requirements. We have to retain all the runoff from that water and maintain it for a certain period of time, so it does not contribute to the first, what they call the first stage of flooding, okay? It releases the water after the first stage of flooding has already passed. So therefore, it doesn't contribute to your flooding overall. It does add water, it just doesn't add it at the time the impacts the flooding, okay? Because you spent lots of money on that site, and both sites, with large, very large detention areas that requires to do that. Secondly, by doing this, it does meander the stream, it does add additional wetland areas around that stream to restore them to the original state that was probably been destroyed over years of agricultural use close to that stream, which would actually slow the water down in that area, which is a good thing. It doesn't let the water flow as quickly to flooded areas or to low-lying areas that would normally flood. So things like this are designed to just specifically help restore the stream to their natural state, that doesn't hold more water for longer periods of time without impacting flooding. So that's the whole point behind the project, is to do that sort of thing. So, from standpoint, it should be a plus-plus, you know, for the flooding situation in that area. We've seen flooding there that, seven feet over the bridge, 15 years ago, houses that were basically four feet above the 100-year flood at that time, were impacted. The stage of flooding there has been that way for a very, very long time, even before the high schools and everything were actually in place. It's just one of those areas that's very low, and depending on the, it's been that storm floods frequently, regardless of, it suddenly impacts upstream. But actually, having a school there probably has much less impact than should you have built it with residential houses, because of the runoff situation associated with those. So actually, it's probably a good thing that you have a high school there versus 150 homes.
Maybe I just need to be sold on this, or have some one-off kind of discussions about the ramifications of this approach.
I did a similar project on Concord Regional Airport. We put in, when Concord Mills came in, they had to impact 600 feet of stream. We had to put back 2,200 feet of stream impact redevelopment, and we actually allowed them easement on the airport property in the floodplain, and then restored, meandered the stream there below the business park to allow them to collect that credit for that meandering of the stream to offset the impact that Concord Mills had, as big as it was. And so it's a very, you know, it's a very well-used program in North Carolina. It's just that most developers cannot find on-site the ability to mitigate those impacts. So therefore, they're allowed to buy into a bank and find processes within the same drainage basin, but find those impacts and be able to mitigate those impacts in a different location to offset their.
There is just so much, obviously, so much development in the Harrisburg area, that they're busting at the seams, and I just want to make sure that this has a positive impact on property values and the ability to get around in that area, and is not in any way detrimental to.
If you're not.
Again, I just need some more education, please.
If you're not within 100 feet of that stream, you'd never know it was there, to be quite honest with you. But, because it's going to be right next to adjacent stream, and it's only going to use the area within that floodplain to be able to restore this creek. So you ride by on Stallings Road, you'll never know it was there. But it would be rippling backside of our practice field there at Hickory Ridge High School, which is a good thing. The water quality will improve as it runs off the site and all that sort of thing, but yeah, I'll get you that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I'd like to see it on action, and I'd like a couple things for next week. Here, we're entering into a contract with a company I've never heard of, have no idea what, who they are, there's no vetting been done. Give us some information about who this company is. Secondly, let's see.
Actually, we entered a contract with them last year, but that's okay. Same company.
Yeah, we entered into a contract with them in December.
Well, if you can give us the information again, because I don't recall exactly who the company is. And secondly, obviously, there's some costs involved in this, and I don't think we should be bearing the cost to subsidize their project.
There is no provision for us to, in any way, to provide any costs associated with it.
Right. Do we not have a legal look at this thing? Isn't there an hourly, there's an hourly cost to that? There's an hourly staff cost. There's a lot of stuff that goes into that. I don't think we ought to be subsidizing that.
My thing, Mark, well, I kind of stressed that. I just want to make sure if we need to get on that land, that we're able, as I mentioned about the raging, you know, I just want to make sure we don't have any kind of problems if there needs to be for us to get on it, that we've got that in the contract, that we, if we need some access to that, that we're not going to be limited to that. That was one of my biggest concerns, and I thought that was addressed the last time.
It was.